All right, with the clock tolling seven, I will call the meeting to order. Are you recording, Ryan?
Aye, oops, let me check to make sure. Yes, it is recording.
Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, starting with roll call. Carla Disjardins here, Sean Peterson.
Here.
Roz Chivik.
Here.
Lindsay Jocelyn. John Meyer.
Here.
Bill Martel. Kathy Messamaker-Harris. Jared Fournier.
Here.
Staff, Ryan Bray.
Here.
Mary Ann Shinati.
Here.
Sonya Chapman.
Here.
Okay, and I will appoint Jared for Lindsay. So we're starting with public hearing, Z 2020 1887, continuation of Plainfield Materials LLC, requesting a special permit for a gravel mining operation on property located at 143 151 Plainfield Pike Road, Plainfield, map 17, block 36, lot 68 and 68A, industrial one zoning district, and map 25, block 36, lot 32, industrial two zoning district. Do we have someone speaking for the applicant?
This is Derek Santini here for the applicant. Norm Tebow is signing onto the call. He had a little trouble with the link and he's working his way onto the call as we speak. He asked me to late.
And Carla, I'd just like to point out that Bill Martel just joined us.
Okay, so noted for the record, Bill is present and seated as an alternate this evening. So Ryan, do you have a summary of changes on this application since we're waiting for the applicant to get on the call?
All the changes were due to engineering and our town engineer Chuck Eaton is with us tonight. So maybe he would like to talk to those.
Madam Chair, would you like me to go through those?
Yes, please.
Okay, so in the, in the review letter, well, I guess for the record, I'm Chuck Eaton, the town engineer. So in the, in the review, in the series of review letters that we have, we left in all the different comments so that the commission and staff could see all the different comments and you'd have a complete record of, of everything at the end here. Um, some of the comments have been addressed, but we, we left those in as they, you know, may help the commission with their decision or possible approval conditions. So for comment number one, that was in regards to the groundwater wells. And I believe that there was some discussion regarding waiving that requirement. The, the design engineer did end up adding the groundwater information to the plant set. They added groundwater contours and provided groundwater mapping. And so the commission may want to discuss whether or not, you know, this fully meets the requirements of section 1232416. Madam Chair, I don't know if you want me to just keep going and we'll come back to some of these or I guess the design engineer is not here yet, so I'll just, I'll just keep going.
Please do.
Okay. Comment number two was in regards to notes for the dewatering design. And those, the, the dewatering system has been revised to indicate that discharges will go to the temporary sedimentation traps. And also a note was added that if the pumping rates to the outlet basins are increased, that those traps would be redesigned by the design engineer. Comment number three, the proposed sedimentation traps were relocated in the phasing plans to show five acres or less of area draining to them. And some additional language was added regarding the phasing of the excavation and the associated location of sedimentation traps. Let's see. Number four was in regards to notes, those have been revised. Number five, the peak flow calculations were revised and updated accordingly. So those are set. Comment six, that was in regards to a table in the drainage report, that is all set. Comment seven. Comment seven was in regards to the completion of the adjacent stormwater basin on the concrete plant property, which this drainage discharges to. And the fact that that would need, that construction would need to be completed before this project was started. And I'm very much paraphrasing and going very quickly. So if you have questions or anything like that, feel free to interrupt me. Let's see. Number eight, the design engineer acknowledged that an easement and a maintenance agreement would be required between the subject lot that we're talking about and the concrete batch plant lot, as they're two separate lots. And the subject lot drains to the concrete batch plant lot. Comment nine is in regards to the state general permit for discharge of stormwater during construction. And the design engineer has indicated that the applicant will be registering with the state for that permit. Number 10, level spreader has been modified and a weird detail added to the site plans. 11 was in regards to gradation of the topsoil that was going to be used in the stormwater basins. That is all set. Number 12 is in regards to the location of erosion controls in the bottom of the proposed stormwater basins. Those have been added. Number 13, the design engineer added a cross-section of the excavation and that cross-section also includes the location of ledge. Number 14 was the location of the construction entrance, that's all set. Number 15 is in regards to the, the length of time that's estimated for this excavation to take place. And that was, that was estimated at 15 years and that's been added to the plan set. And a couple of other things within that comment. You know, we, we suggest that, you know, between town staff and my office and the design engineer, that we all do some inspections, especially at the start of construction, just to make sure that everything is going to be functioning properly. And to have sufficient eyes on, on this operation once, as it's starting up here. And we had also suggested that the sedimentation erosion control inspections from the state general permit should be submitted to town staff, just so that the town can be on the same page as what the state is on. Comment 16 is in regards to intermediate erosion control, sedimentation barrier. There's some, some fairly long slopes that are proposed here, so we wanted to see some additional erosion controls on those slopes. Those have been added. The bond estimate, I believe the bond estimate is all set, that's number 17. Number 18, the sizing calculations for the temporary sediment traps have been added. Number 19, the design engineer added a a diversion at the top of the slopes prior to the stormwater basins as opposed to a crushed stone berm. And the diversion will keep water from running down the face of that slope as opposed to the crushed stone berm, which would still allow water to flow across the face. So we're, we're basically controlling the water as it comes off of the excavation site and not allowing it to road, to erode that steeper slope there. And it's, it's being conveyed into the stormwater basins in a, in a non-erosive manner. And that is it.
So if I heard that correctly, the applicant is still requesting the waiver of the groundwater because the changes made do not sufficiently meet the regulation for that?
Nope, I don't, I don't know what the applicant is going to request as far as that. But in my conversations with the design engineer, they provided the information that's shown or that is listed in that regulation. So now the reg, I say it appears that they have met that regulation because the regulation has some vagueness to it, you know, as far as like the, the monitoring should be done in the wet season. It doesn't define what the wet season is. And I'm trying to remember some of the other vague aspects of that regulation offhand. Oh, I think it says it needs to be done for a certain period of time. And I don't remember if it specifies exactly how long it needs to be monitored for. But, you know, those are things that the commission could discuss. And, you know, if the, if the commission is satisfied that that groundwater regulation is met, then I don't think that there would be a need for the waiver.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or a question, has Norm joined the call yet?
I just sent him the dial-in instructions and he's gonna dial instead of trying to get on. For whatever reason, it's I, I, I sent him as well. I don't know, Ryan, could you maybe email Norm another Zoom link? That definitely, I'm sure it is probably works, mine worked fine. I don't know if there's another one you could try to send him.
Yep, I'll do that now.
He's actively trying, I have.
Okay, so is there anyone on the call with a comment or a question regarding this application? If so, just unmute yourself, state your name and what your question is, and if we're able to answer it. And if not, we will hold off on it until Norm joins the call. Any comments or questions from board members for our engineer while we wait for the applicant? Any additional comments from staff?
This is John Meyer. I think in order to maybe clarify the vague nature of the wet season, if we could just reference the Northeast Health District's wet season or sanitary systems, that should clarify.
Sorry, let me interrupt. Ryan, Norm says that he's waiting for the host to let him in.
There he is, I was sending in the link, so I wasn't on the screen. Hey, Norm, you're muted.
Many people enjoy when I'm muted.
Well, just to catch you up, Norm, Chuck did a review of the comments from his letter. And we were discussing clarity on what the wet season definition would be. And John Meyer mentioned the Northeast Health District definition. And then we were also asking if the applicant was withdrawing their request for waiver because they felt they had met the needs or the requirements of the regulation. So are you still requesting a waiver?
No, I am not, I am not. I believe, I believe that we've, we've addressed that, that issue.
Okay. So now that Norm is on the call, is there anyone with a comment or question for the applicant? Any comments or questions from staff?
All of my comments are in the staff report. Would you like me to go over them?
Yes, please, for the record.
So the things that the commission must address is, one, the performance ENS restoration bond. The applicant can choose to submit each bond at the start of each phase or submit a bond for the maximum amount of $227,730 $227,730 and carry that throughout the project. And that is because phase three, that is the highest bond amount. That was for the 227, so they can just submit that and carry it throughout. I think the, the applicant does wish to do that, if we spoke about that previously. So if the applicant would like to just present that 227,000 and change, the commission must vote on that and allow for it. Other, other comments, I just have a list of suggestion, suggested conditions of approval. So the MyLARS is to be filed in the clerk's office prior to obtaining a zoning permit. Drainage easements onto the Plainfield Garage's property must be submitted to this file and recorded on the land records prior to filing the MyLARS. All legal review and engineering fees, which I don't think we have any legal review. Engineering fees accrued by the town are to be paid prior to filing the MyLARS. A copy of the DEP stormwater permit is to be submitted for the file prior to obtaining a zoning permit. And reporting of ENS control inspections submitted to DEP shall be submitted to PNC staff for the file. The performance ENS restoration bond of 227 shall be submitted prior to obtaining a zoning permit. That is, of course, if the commission agrees to that. No federal holiday operation, as this approval is, is an extension of the Plainfield Materials operation. Truck trips, traffic, and material processing shall adhere to special permit Z 2018 1395 of Plainfield Materials LLC granted September 11th, 2018. And Dow Road access shall be blocked off. The town engineer also had the following. Due to the fluid nature of the excavation, the locations of erosion and control measures must be coordinated with the town engineer, design engineer, and applicant. As the excavation advances, the applicant will be responsible for fees accrued by the town for town engineering services. The stormwater basin of the Plainfield Garage's site must be completed and stabilized with the size and outlet elevations confirmed prior to the start of excavation of this project. And that wraps it up.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience with a comment or a question, this is your opportunity. If there's any staff or board members with additional comments or questions, this is your opportunity as well.
Ryan, I have a question. The Plainfield Garage, is that the concrete batch plant?
Concrete bash plant is on part of that property.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by Roz. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And just Bill, you're not a voting member tonight, so you can mute the whole time. All right, hearing no objection, any abstentions? All right, public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, so I'll call the regular meeting to order. And we do have additions to the agenda. Under new business, item B, Z 2020 1963 of Northeast Real Estate, requesting site plan approval for two contractor buildings, 11,840 square feet and 2,400 square feet at 135 141 Ward Ave, Assessor's Map 2M, block 94C, lot 11. Item C, Z 2020 1964 of Northeast Real Estate, requesting site plan approval of a 3,360 square foot addition to a truck repair facility located at 108 114 Commercial Drive, Assessor's Map 5, block 4, lot 41C. Item D, Z 2020 1965 of Affordable Lock and Stock, requesting site plan approval to construct storage units at 97 Ward Ave, Assessor's Map 2M, block 94C, lot 6. And then item E, Z 2020 1967 of Sangermano Properties LLC, requesting planned development district site plan review for retail and wholesale business, building materials, storage and sale, manufacturer of construction and building materials from earth, rock, ore, minerals, and recycled materials, truck terminal, earth excavation processing, and removal on property located at 1221 Norwich Road. Do I have a motion to add those to the agenda under new business?
I'll make a motion to add them onto new business.
I'll approve.
I have a motion and a motion by Roz and a second by John. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, added to the agenda. B, C, D, and E under new business. Citizen participation, this is opportunity for anyone from the public to address the commission on something that was not a public hearing. Okay, hearing none, unfinished business. Item A, Z 2020 1887, continuation of Plainfield Materials LLC, requesting special permit for gravel mining operation on property located at 143 151 Plainfield Pike Road, Plainfield, map 17, block 36, lot 68 and 68A, industrial one zoning district, and map 25, block 36, lot 32, industrial two zoning district. Items for discussion among board members. So the applicant withdrew the request for waiver because they felt that they had met the requirements. And as Chuck outlined, that depends on our interpretation of those regulations and whether that was met. So that's one item to discuss. Then also we have to resolve the bond amount. That is a separate vote, the bond, to accept or modify the proposed bond amount as read by Ryan. And then lastly would be whether a motion would include the conditions as read by Ryan. So any comments from board members on this application? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Do you want a motion on the application or on the waiver?
I think waiver first and then application, is that correct order, Mary Ann or Ryan?
They're not requesting the waivers anymore. What you, except, yeah, exactly.
Have they approved, have they agreed to the bond, bond amount?
We have nothing, I shall at the moment.
We do agree to the.
That would be the one, one sum of 227,000 and change?
Yeah.
Okay. So that will be carried throughout the, throughout the project.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on the bond proposal.
I'll make a motion to approve the bond, the bond proposal of 227, 730 for the duration of the project.
I'll second that.
Motion by Sean, second by John, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, bond proposal of 227,730 is approved. So moving on to the application. Any item for discussion on whether they met the requirement and whether any conditions would be required?
I think the conditions that Ryan suggested should be added.
Is that a motion, Roz, or just a discussion?
Yes, I can make a motion. Yeah, I have a motion that we accept with the conditions.
As read by Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve the application with the conditions as read by Ryan into the record. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, application is approved. All right, moving on to item B.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you. My apologies for the late sign-in.
Chuck did a great job in your absence.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Madam Chair, do you, do you need me to stick around for any of these other applications?
I don't believe so. Mary Ann and Ryan, could you just confirm that?
I don't have anything.
I don't believe so.
All right, thanks for joining us, Chuck, have a great evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Item B, Z 2020 1904, continuation of Exeter Group, requesting site plan review for proposed 202,044 square foot warehouse. Ryan, was this being requested to continue again?
Yes, they were.
Okay, so given the applicant needed more time, I'll entertain a motion to continue to our February meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sean, second by John, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, application is continued to February. Item C, Z 2020 1932, continuation of Devijay Bansal, requesting a site plan review for addition to building to accommodate convenience store sales in addition to pizza restaurant on property located at 66 Warigan Road, Warigan, map 1W, block 133C, lot 67, RA 19 zoning district. And do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
He was on here.
I think he is still on there.
He is here.
He's muted.
Yes.
Mr. Bansal, if you unmute yourself, there we go.
Hello, I'm trying to unmute that, yes.
Okay. Ryan, do you have the site plan you can bring up so Mr. Bansal can go through what he's doing?
I am attempting, however, I have a technical issue.
And just for awareness, this is the Warigan Pizza on Route 205, is that correct?
Correct.
And was this application variance information approved at last week's zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Okay. So for awareness, per staff notes, there were side yard setbacks that were requesting to be reduced and those were approved.
Yes, they were. Here we go. Okay, so here we have the site plan. And Mr. Menzel, if you would like to go over this?
Do I have to say anything? It's my.
Just give an overview of what you're doing.
Yeah, this is my existing pizza. I'm expanding it both side, one this and here, so that I can bring the convenience store here. I'm going to use this front area of the pizza place and this side for the convenience store. And this back portion, and this is for the pizza preparing activity, I'm going to use this area.
So in this area, this would be the, the entryway and
Yes.
staging area for ordering pizza, picking up. This area over here is proposed to be an addition for a convenience store.
Yes.
This area over here would be an addition for more prep area. We do have some issues with the site plan. It does not meet our requirement. We do have some issues with the site plan, it does not meet our requirements. So I'll go over the deficiencies. The plan does not state site development plan on it, rather zoning location survey and resurvey, which is rather minor, but should be on there. There is no signature block for the planning and zoning commission chair to sign, again, minor. There is no location map at 1,000 scale, that is a requirement of the site plan review. Location of existing structures within 50 feet are not shown and there are houses that are very close to this property, so they should be shown on the plan. There is no topography and it's fairly flat site, but we should have some topography on there. It is a requirement of the site plan. No buffer screening has been shown and as the additions are getting closer to the property lines than what is existing, it can be impacting the neighboring properties more, so some sort of a buffer should be posed there. So given those, I'd like to speak to the, to the surveyor that prepared the plans and go over what needs to be added to them. I just received them this afternoon and so I had a few moments to take a look at them. And that's what I came up with so far.
Okay, I can provide you the survey information if you don't have.
Okay, well, the plan has to be revised to be with our regulations.
Okay, if you explain him what he need to, because I'm not that much technical in this thing.
Right, so if you have him, give me a call, I'll talk.
I will.
Ryan, is that the only picture you have, the only?
I, I also have floor plan. So here's a floor plan. And as you can see, this is the addition off to the side. This would have all the coolers in it for the convenience store. This is the current building, existing building, and this is the area for customers. This is the addition that will be prep area off to the right side.
So Ryan, this is currently a non-conforming, right?
Correct, it is an RA 19 zone, use is legally non-conforming.
Okay.
What are the axes for the parking spots?
This was, this is not drawn to what was shown on the site plan.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make it known that these are not being proposed because they're hand drawn.
Okay.
Now Ryan, under the non, non-conforming regulations, doesn't it prohibit the expansion of a non-conforming use?
Correct, that was one of the variances that was granted.
Okay. So are there notes on the plan about the variances and their approvals?
There is not currently, in the packet that was submitted, there was a copy of what was proposed to the, to the ZBA, I do not have that on the screen.
Is that North Chestnut, North Walnut Street, really that close to this building or is there a property between them?
It is not, that is not accurate.
Is this to scale, Ryan?
I don't believe so.
No, it's not.
It's a site, it does not match the, the site plan.
Okay, okay.
Comes along here, North Chestnut here. This is actually somebody's yard over here.
All right, so this application is incomplete, needs revisions, and cannot be acted on tonight.
Correct.
Okay, so given that information, I'll entertain a motion from the committee to continue to the next meeting.
How many, how many times have we continued him? Can we continue?
This is first time before us.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, well, 60 days to act plus an additional 90 days granted by executive order due to COVID. So we have 150 days to act on it.
Okay, hopefully I don't take that wrong. All right, I'll make a motion to continue the next month's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion to continue by Sean, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, continue to February.
And just for the record, Ryan, our agenda says continuation of.
Correct, he was before us last month, it was not.
Presented, it was just accepted.
Right, because he.
Wait for the ZBA.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. Item A, Z 2020 1956 of Justin Parloplano, Connecticut Water Company, requesting a site plan review for demolition of two existing water storage tanks and construction of one new water storage tank with associated site work on property located at Zero Patty Lane, Warregan, RA 30 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
Yes, Justin is here, Representative Connecticut Water, as well as Robert Tedeschi, who represents Weston Sampson, the design engineer.
Okay, so if we can pull up the plan, Ryan, and then Justin, if you could take us through what you're doing.
Certainly.
Just give me a few moments here. My computer's acting funky tonight, but I haven't.
I believe C 400 would be the site development plan, right?
No.
Great, well, thank you, again, my name is Justin Parloplano, I represent Connecticut Water, the owner. The summary of this project is essentially, this is a replacement project of two existing tanks on this parcel for one new tank. The tank on page left was constructed in 1920 and the tank on the right was constructed in the 1950s. So at this point, these tanks have exceeded their useful life and as a part of our capital planning, it has come up as a replacement project. And so the two existing tanks will become one tank that is a larger tank and has a larger capacity. Right, that's, that's the summary of the purpose of the job. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any other questions in regards to it.
Just to go over that again, so right here, this circle is one of the tanks, this is the other tank. This larger circle here would be the replacement tank that would be larger and taller to take the place of both the tanks. And then we have associated work around it. This would be an overflow basin in case a, in case the tank overflows or they have to drain it for some reason, it would go into this area here. And then it will go out to a road, tie in with a catch basin. And that was all reviewed by our town engineer and they have no issues with it.
Were there any other comments on staff regarding this application?
No comments on the design. I do have some suggestion conditions of approval. So under conditions of approval, the finalized driveway details meeting our driveway ordinance shall be submitted as part of the required driveway permit. So what was presented to us does not quite meet the ordinance, is not pertinent to the plan because they can take care of that during the driveway permit process. So as part of the, obtaining the driveway permit, they'll have to submit finalized plan, that meets the requirements of our ordinance. The driveway permit is required prior to receiving a zoning permit to construct. Engineering review fees, which are to be determined, are to be paid prior to receiving the zoning permit. MyLARS will be recorded in the town clerk's office prior to receiving a zoning permit. The variances to be recorded in the town clerk's office prior to receiving a zoning permit. And per engineer's comments, the outlet pipe from the overflow basin is to be capped until the site is stabilized.
And if I could, if I could add one more condition, Mary Ann Chinati, town planner, the approved variances should be added to the MyLARS.
And for the record, just going over what the variances were for. The first variance was to allow for the water tank has a permitted use on that property because right now, regulations do not allow for water tanks in, in any properties, in, in any zones. It was simply an oversight. So this is now an allowed use for that particular property by variance. And the second will be to allow for a maximum height of 88 feet. And the reason why it has to be 88 feet is the height of the tank dictates, dictates the pressure and 88 feet is what's required for them to, to have adequate pressure.
And those were also approved last week?
They were.
What's the height of the current tanks?
The height of the current tanks are roughly 50 feet.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members on the application? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Make a motion to approve with the conditions stated by Ryan and Mary Ann.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion to approve with conditions as stated, second by Sean, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item B. Z 2020 1963 of Northeast Real Estate requesting site plan approval for two contractor buildings. Do we have this application complete or is this just being accepted tonight?
The application is complete, however, it just came in recently, I did not have a chance to review it, so we would not be able to act on it. Also, I have one, or actually a correction for all four of these new items that were voted on. My mistake, it is Z 2021, not Z 2020.
Ah, okay. So noted, noted for Sonia, for the record, to correct those. So I might correct them, the four are all being accepted but not reviewed this evening, so they would be individually continued to the next meeting? Is that correct, Ryan?
I'm sorry, I was reading something, can you repeat that?
For all four new items, am I correct that they are not prepared to be reviewed this evening, but rather continued to the next meeting?
Correct, they all just came in the past couple of days.
Okay, so then the board could make a motion to continue all four in one motion rather than individually vote?
Um.
Or do they need to be individually motioned?
Mary Ann, would you like to weigh in on that?
We can individually vote, that's not a problem.
All right.
So I'll entertain a motion to continue item B, Z 2021. So then the number, Ryan, wouldn't be 1963, would it be 0001?
No, 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 they, they still have the same correct last numbers, it was just 2021 instead of 2020.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
So I have a motion to continue by Sean and a second by Roz, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, application is continued to the next meeting. Item C, Z 2020 19, 2021, 1964 of Northeast Real Estate requesting site plan approval. I entertain a motion to continue this to our next meeting. So move.
I'll second it.
Motion by Roz, second by Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item D, Z 2021 1965 of Affordable Lock and Stock requesting site plan approval. I'll entertain the motion to continue.
I'll make the motion to continue.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Jared, so motion by Sean, second by Jared, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, continued to February. Item E, Z 2021 1967 of Sangermano Properties requesting plan development district site plan review. And I'll entertain a motion to continue that.
This would be a public hearing, so you do have to schedule it.
Ah, okay, and that's because it's a PDD site plan, is that right, Ryan?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing.
I'll make the motion. Schedule a public hearing for next month.
I'll second it.
Motion by Sean, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, scheduled for public hearing. All right, moving on to reviewing and acting on the minutes from the December 8th meeting. Did anyone have any modifications or changes to the minute? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
And then a motion to accept by Roz, second by Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. Moving on to correspondence.
I have none.
Okay.
I have none.
Wasn't, wasn't there something that came in the minute with our agenda?
I think there was one item, hold on. The letter from State of Connecticut Siting Council, Anne Marie Zasamba, about EMT Mobile Notice of Intent, modifying the telecommunication.
It's a Unity Street? Property 45 Unity, I believe?
Correct.
751 Unity?
Yep. So one item of correspondence. And this is just a notification, am I right about that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so noted as, noted as correspondence. Then moving on to other enforcement procedure. At our previous meeting, we had discussed how not responding to our enforcement agent was not an acceptable action and that we didn't have any procedure in place for escalating. So in the packet was a draft of a zoning enforcement procedure. Did staff want to review that?
It's basically a four-step process as the procedure outlines. First step is when you're aware, made aware of a potential zoning violation, you send a letter to the property owner, regular mail, indicating that you've been made aware of the situation and requesting them to call to discuss the matter. And if indeed it is confirmed that a violation exists, discuss a timeframe for bringing the property into compliance. If there's no action on the first letter, then send another letter via certified return receipt mail, requiring the property owner to contact the zoning enforcement officer within a specific amount of days to schedule an inspection and discuss a timeframe to bring the property into compliance. And if there is no action on that, then a cease and desist would be ordered, which is step three. And that would require compliance, not discussion of a timeframe, require compliance within X days or the matter would be forwarded to the attorney and a notice of violation would be placed on the land records. If the cease and desist is ignored, then it would go to the attorney and the notice of violation would be put on the land records. It just establishes a uniform pattern and it doesn't allow things to languish.
Should there be a timeframe between steps, 1, 2, 3, 4? Like 30 days?
Well, that's what the X means, you know, depending on. You know, depending on what the violation is or may be, you know, could require contact me, well, all contact me's, I would recommend no more than 10 days, because that's adequate time for someone to get ahold of you. Um, but as far as compliance goes, that's, uh, at the discretion, depending on the egregiousness of the violation, how big it is, uh, could be as, as easy as a week. Could be something that would take longer, um, 30 days. And if it takes longer than that, potentially revisit the issue. But it just keeps things moving along. And the only thing that's an immediate cease and desist is for earthmoving operations.
Well, my only question is, is that leaves, doesn't that leave it open where you could drag out step one and two for six months? Just because it doesn't actually state it?
Not really, because, I mean, this, this procedure is, it, the goal is to eliminate that prolonging and that painful length of time. Um, this would make it, make it a more uniform and a more responsive in a perfect world, procedure for the zoning enforcement officer, and it would make it easier on the zoning enforcement officer, because there would be an established pattern of this is what we do now, and if this isn't taken care of, we do this as the next step on this date. It's, it's just much cleaner.
And it'll be consistent.
Should we put a number in?
Yeah, I agree.
Should we replace the X with a number, though?
Yeah. So in step one, owner must call within 10 days.
10 days.
And then with step two, same, do 10 days as well?
I would, yeah.
Okay. And actually, all right, so it does require the property owner to call no later than X date. So we should just say to call within 10 days from the date? So keep the language consistent in step one and two?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Now, in step three, that's where discretion would come in, because if somebody's removing one car versus 12 cars, then that would be more flexible. So should we have a note, um, regarding discretion of ZEO?
Um, I would frankly leave it as X, because that way he can put in a number. I mean, this, this is not something that would go to the potential violator. This is something that is an internal document that we would work with.
Got it.
So, you know, the zoning enforcement officer, after he meets with the potential, with the violator, then he can decide, okay, this should take about this long.
Okay.
And then the only other question I have or comment I have is, on the bottom of the signature block, uh, says Chairman Carla Dischard. Are we, is this a, is this a one-time document where she would sign off on it, or is this a, a document that's going to be redone every year with it? The current chairman will be signing it?
No, this is, this is a, I mean, you obviously can make revisions to it as you move forward, but this is just, I mean, it's not something that's going to be revisited on a regular basis.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, can you go into a little depth, uh, for me, please, on the owner consent and the neighbor consent?
Yeah, um, zoning enforcement officer is not allowed to enter onto private property without permission of the property owner. If, uh, for example, there's a violation at 27 whatever street, and the property owner of 29 whatever street says, well, you can see it from my house, and you're more than welcome to come on to my property and observe it. Then he can go, he can observe from the abutting property.
Oh, so that's just granting him permission to do this?
Yeah.
Is that what that's about? Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, modifications? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this procedure with the changes we discussed.
Make a motion to adopt this procedure with changes we discussed.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Sean and a second by John, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, application, or not application, procedure is adopted. Okay, a report from zoning enforcement.
Um, I don't have a report prepared. I do have two updates. First is the Ruins Fields, um, owner of Ruin Road and Norwich Road. Notice of violation was sent out on, uh, December 16th, and that was received. Have not been out that way to see if any more work has been done out there or not. And the second update is the, uh, the violation that to South Pine Street, which was the, uh, Fraxel Dump Truck along with a couple of, um, trailers and horses. The zoning board of appeals upheld the violation at last week's meeting. So their appeal was denied. I guess word is they have decided to, um, possibly sell the house and move. I drove by today, and there was, there was the, uh, the tri-axle and the two horses with dump trailers attached in the yard.
Okay. Any questions about violations from commission members? You need to address.
Oh, we make it on the other ones, Ryan, anything yet? I mean, obviously, you don't have any updates, but.
Right. Um, so we are still working on, uh, the shed place. I have a file almost ready to be sent out to the, uh, um, to the attorney. We have to get some more pictures, some current pictures. I sent out an email today to the building's fire marshal. We're going to make a, a joint inspection. So I'm waiting to hear back from them, and then they would like to go. As far as 211 Kate Downing Road, Mackin, um, that file is just about ready to go as well. I just want to grab a couple of pictures of, uh, the current conditions.
When might those be filed? Any idea?
I'm hoping to get them done next week.
Next week? Okay. And are you having good luck with the building inspector and the fire marshal? What, on that, that issue?
Yeah, I mean, we're, our hands are kind of tied with the court systems, but we're, we're moving as quickly as we can, so.
Well, our hands aren't tied if we haven't presented anything to the court system yet, have I?
They are currently working with the attorney.
Okay.
Did you have a comment, Russ? You're muted.
No, it was addressed. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Mr. Cunningham.
All right, so, uh, as Ryan was stating, that, uh, we are working with the attorney for both those two, uh, issues. And, uh, he has graciously asked us to follow certain steps in order to get to where we need to get to for, uh, to prepare for the court system. So, um, I'm encouraging, um, all parties to do so, so we can go forward with this.
Okay. Any other comments on violations? All right, hearing none. Moving to the report from Planning and Zoning Department.
I have nothing other than my written report that I provided.
Okay, and then hearing no other items on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Motion by John, second by Roz, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and see you next month. Stay well.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.